Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Workshop for September 30th, 2019. Item number one, roll call please.
Mayor Morris.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilman Lehman is absent.
Thank you. Item number two, let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections at all, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Counselor Contreras?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as stated. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number four, our strategic planning workshop on day two, and we'll jump right into it with Craig Rapp.
All right. Hey, you all showed up again. That's positive for me. So, we left off last time. Let me do a quick recap of what we had done last time, just to get everybody up to speed. I will not go through all the slides, so take a deep breath here. The reality is that we talked about the process that we would go through, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I am going to go through that, just so that we know where we're headed tonight. But the SWOT analysis was the central information for how we got to where we were. You looked at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. You took those strengths and opportunities, and you saw what your strengths might leverage, and what your weaknesses and threats combined would be critical issues that you'd try to avoid. We took that information, and we threw that on a list of challenges. You also had one document that you all put together through that SWOT analysis that said, "Here are some challenges or issues that we all think are important." So, with all that raw material, you came up with this list. Now, it was getting late in the evening, and I think our energy was flagging, but we did get to a point where we said, "Yeah, this is a pretty good list, and if we had to identify things that were high priority, here are the things." I, a couple minutes ago, I took the liberty of transferring that to this, but I don't feel personally, now that I'm looking at it, I don't feel like we're quite ready to just say, "This is the final list." I want to give you a little bit more of an opportunity, just to, just to pause and say, "Did we really get everything now that we're fresh, and that we have some opportunity to reflect on where we were, what we did?" And at the last minute, right before we came to this conclusion, if you look up on the screen, I said the kinds of things, the kinds of challenges that I typically run into, and this is by no means universal, but more frequently than not, the communities that I deal with identify things around finance, and you did say fiscal stability. Some kind of things around maybe community unrest that could have to do with services or taxes. If you have unrest, that's typically what it, what it deals with. Infrastructure comes up quite a bit. We talked a little bit about that the other night. Development, redevelopment, economic decline, all of, many and all of those issues. We did talk about that, although it did not yet appear on this list. Organizational effectiveness comes up quite often. That could be either service delivery, it could be just generally the organizational effectiveness or operational effectiveness, and then workforce issues, which you did identify as staff development, but there could be lots of ways of slicing and dicing that one as well. And so with that in mind, I want to ask you, take another quick look at this list, and then we're gonna go back to the, and, and, and let me know, are there, are there other things that didn't make that list that should have made that list? Just based on what you know is out there, what are, what are the things that are challenging to you right now? And in particular, in this next three-year performance period, because this is the strategic plan for the next three years, three to five years, I guess we're unclear about that. But, but the point being, what are the things that you know you're gonna be dealing with strategically?
I'd like to add diversity on that priority list.
Okay, and so...
It's on there, but not on our big one.
Okay.
And I'd like to take a look at number five, the entertainment culture and recreation. It seems like it's kind of a catch-all.
Okay.
And we kind of missed out, I think, because we do, we are gonna have development and redevelopment, economic development, I guess you, I wouldn't say economic decline like you have up there, but I think it has more to do with utilities and answering some questions about how we develop in our processes.
So, let, let, now let's go back to this one, and just, because I had some questions about that, too. It, when I was recalling the conversation, it had to do more with getting your fair share from the, you know, in other words, there are, there are huge demand on your services, and yet you're not necessarily recovering financially from what they demand.
So, I wouldn't put it like that. That kind of, the way we have it written on the board here, it kind of states it. But, so it would be part of that recovery for some of our infrastructure needs, but not necessarily that, or actually staffing needs. But also, part of our, what we sell here, we sell our product or services.
Yeah.
And we have utilities that we worry about.
Yeah.
And we manage all of those things.
Sure. So, and maybe, could we, I don't know who's in charge of this, could we bring it down? I'm getting just a little bit of feedback here, and I want to have that happen. So, is, let me ask the group, is this more about infrastructure? Is it more about financial stability, taxation? Is it more about managing some aspect of something? What is it?
It really is all of it, Craig. We're talking about the impacts
Yeah.
that the entertainment, uh, culture and recreation has upon the community.
Okay.
Now, there are pluses and minuses to that.
Right.
Um, you know, and as we look to, uh, you know, we are a destination, we want to continue to be a destination. Uh, we're actually working on a parks plan that's going to do a lot for our riverfront to enhance being a destination.
Okay.
But the reality is, is that we have to be able to, to address the impacts of, 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 not only the people that come in, but the organizations that are, are involved as well.
Okay.
We have to, we have to, we have to be able to address the impacts.
I think, uh, I think the impact is where we, we looked at this, but I kind of turned the coin over as well.
Uh-huh.
I fully acknowledge the impact, but I really see opportunity here to enhance the culture, the entertainment, the recreation, um, through those venues and the riverfront, and turn those, you know, turn those pluses into little strengths and the off-crews into strengths.
Okay. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Um, under challenges issued, I, I don't see how we couldn't have development and redevelopment on that priority list.
Yeah.
Gotta be. That, and the majority of things at the council level, and planning and engineering that we're working on, and a lot of other departments, it's focused on that. I would put, put my vote to make sure that gets on the priority list.
Yeah, that has the impacts on infrastructure.
I think I was thinking, it was all lumped together, but I think it needs to be.
So, there's, there's going to be, I'm gonna give you another way to think about this in a second, but just for right now, there, we usually come to a point at this stage where you can classify things differently. So, for example, because the entertainment, culture, recreation hits a lo, a number of areas, you could think about it as, so let's say you had an infrastructure priority, and let's say you had a development and redevelopment priority, and you already have a fiscal stability priority. Under each of the priority areas, I'm gonna be challenging you to come up with the three most important proj, uh, outcomes that you want to have happen in each of those areas. Well, you could have an entertainment, culture, and recreation outcome in here, and you could have another one in here, and you could have another one in here. And so it might not stand alone as a priority, but you could have outcomes in different areas that relate to that, if you know what I mean. And so, there is a one way or the other of looking at it. Part of what you need to think about, and what I want to challenge you to think about, is this is also a public document. And so, if you think making a statement that, that this is a high priority by putting that as the priority and stating that publicly and capturing all those things under this, then, you know, that's okay. I'm not saying you shouldn't do that. I'm just saying there's, inevitably, there are, there are different ways of looking at that.
I think that sometimes that the priority that you put the idea under, the outcome under, kind of creates the lens that you're going to be looking through that outcome.
Yes, for sure.
So, if it's fiscal stability, and we're going to have an outcome to look at our infrastructure and make sure that we are
Yep.
planned for funding for the next 10 years, that puts that fiscal lens on it. Is that correct?
Here's a, here's a, that you teed it up, and I didn't even have to pay him to do this. The, the one, one way to do that is to use what's called a balanced scorecard approach. Uh, and, and I want, I do want you to think about this. So, balanced scorecard simply means this, and, and this has been around for a long time. It's used in every sector, public, private, nonprofit. But what it says is, there are four different things that underpin every kind of organization. They, every organization has these four pillars, and you can't succeed if you ignore one of those pillars for a long period of time. They are financial stewardship or financial performance. You have to have financial performance, you don't exist. Your business process or how you operate, so your business efficiency, the effectiveness of your operations. You have to know what you're doing in order to be successful. So, you have to have financial performance, you have to know what you're doing. Your organizational capacity, this is your learning, your, whether your staff has the abilities and the, and the talent to do the jobs in the operations to get you the financial performance. And then finally, and usually this is the first thing, customer or stakeholder satisfaction, or in your case, citizens' too, satisfaction. Are you meeting the needs and expectations of your citizens, customers, and stakeholders? So, how do you know that, and, and what are you doing? So, if I just sort of use that and looked at this, yeah, fiscal, you're talking about it. Communication, you're, you're wanting to make sure you're connecting with your citizens, your customers, understanding that. Staff development, that's your organizational capacity or your workforce. Uh, collaboration, that's stakeholders, but, you know, I don't know. And the others are, are, are pieces of the rest of it. Development, redevelopment, I would say that's part of operational effectiveness or your operating, uh, capacity. A little bit of that goes back to fiscal stability. And diversity is both. It, it could be both your customer, your citizen, and your staff. So, what I would want you to do and, and think about is, where are the holes here? Or how do things fit in there, and what isn't on that list as you think about it?
Are we done consolidating this list?
Not yet, no. We're, we're still, we're still at the point, I'm gonna, in about five minutes, I'm gonna ask you to come down to no more than six. So, you're either gonna throw one or two more on, or we're gonna start breaking it down.
I think you have to put infrastructure on there.
Okay.
But I think for, for process
Yep.
to make sure there's a focus on that.
I'll just put it right here, because there's more space. Makes the city engineer happy when I do that, anyway.
I would say, I would say safety.
Public safety?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was the top priority that the community had in, in the survey last year. I don't know, I would argue it would fit under communication.
Yeah.
Doing a better job highlighting what reality is, but that was...
And, and so again, when we start to prioritize, what I want to make sure that you also know is that these are your strategic focus areas. And it doesn't mean that you aren't going to do the day in and day out service delivery and all the projects attendant with the service delivery. So, even if you have important projects, and they, for some reason, that one project either doesn't show up, I think inevitably, it, some of those major things would fall under, potentially under some of these categories.
That's why I asked you for consolidation.
Because I think we should be going there now.
One last call, then, for adding to priorities that...
Craig, the, um, the development redevelopment piece is broad. A couple of them are really broad.
Yep.
Aren't we really talking about dealing with the effects of development and redevelopment?
Here's what I would say. I don't know, and in the next three years, what is inevitably got, going to be your focus? And, and yes, redevelopment and development is gigantic. That's a huge umbrella. So, in the next three years, are you gonna be focused, you know, I'll give you an example. I asked this question of a, of a client recently, and they said, "No." Our problem is, we're all, we're trying to do all this stuff, and we're not focused enough. So, they came down with the notion of focused redevelopment was actually what they needed to be working on. It wasn't greenfield development, it wasn't, it was focused redevelopment. So, that's what they said. I don't know what your thing is, but you need to identify what your thing is if that becomes an issue.
Because we, we are gonna grow.
Yeah, so maybe it's growth management, or maybe it's focused growth, or managed growth, or something like that, if that's in fact, you know, part of it.
How we grow, obviously, in the next, I think we're in a great spot here. Um, you know, the Canterbury redevelopment, you know, if we fast forward to think about what that's gonna be like three years from now, that's critically important. The downtown riverfront, which is redevelopment. But also, I feel straight-line greenfield out on the west end is critically important, too. And maybe we will grow organically that way, but it's how we grow over there. If we're gonna have, uh, the housing along with business, uh, business park down along 169, I think is critical.
Yeah, man, I think it comes down to, do we want more warehouses or high-paying jobs?
So, so my, if I look at what you said last time in this realm, continued growth and development, that's a big opportunity, but you had all these plans, right? And on the other side, it was lack of planning and follow-through. To me, that, what that says to me is, the priority for the, for the near term is planned growth or managed growth, or something like that, is really what your priority is, if I'm interpreting what you said through that process.
We, we have a concrete plan, but...
I, I wasn't here last time, but, but having thought about this a lot and looking at the notes and listening, I think having a priority on delivering, deliverables, in terms of, you know, sometimes we overpromise and underdeliver.
Uh-huh.
And so, making sure that what we promise, we deliver on. So, when we talk development, like whatever the vision is for development, we actually deliver on that. Or if it's redevelopment, here at the, at the, um, Cooper Park area, that's what we're gonna do. We actually deliver on that, um, and, and not overpromise, but narrowing the scope. Because some of these plans were really audacious, we've talked about that, and they're really big. And so scoping it to what's deliverable.
Well, you did say, you did say, lack of planning and follow-through. And you did say, implement big ideas, continued managing growth and development. So, that, you know, you're circling around this issue. But my question is, what's the umbrella term for that priority?
I wouldn't call it managed development. It sounds like you're trying to tamp it down a little bit. That's gonna kind of grow on its own, but I think the redevelopment focus and the, the big ideas part is gonna take some planning and some management. So, I, I would want to focus it more to that, than I would on, on regular development, whether it's residential or commercial.
Delivering planned growth?
I've kind of been dancing around a lot of different ways, but to me, the thing that creates an umbrella for this really well is like community identity, community image. All the growth items are really towards who Shakopee wants to be, what we want, what we want to provide for residents coming forward. It's an image or an identity issue to me.
Okay.
Community identity is what it means.
Okay.
How do you deliver that? I think it's those big ideas.
Been through years of managed growth, where they were trying to tamp down that.
No, as soon as you said it, go along. I manage my growth.
If you look at the comp plan and all of the things that are in there, none of those are cheap.
Right.
They're investments to build an identity that already to a certain extent, or to enhance an identity, that already to a certain extent exists. But it's going to take the courage to execute.
Okay.
But to me, it all comes down, I don't know, but I thought you said this last week, Michael, about identity and how...
I like your term inha, enhance.
Enhance in identity, yep.
Enhance existing, or...
Enhancing community identity, is that the...
Something on, I was kind of worn out.
Because the, we have the culture of the farm, we just kind of ignore it along the river. We have a riverfront, and a lot of the big ideas are there, they just need to be in.
And the enhancing community portion actually is kind of what we were talking about with five, with the entertainment, culture, recreation.
Yeah.
And also, but the other piece of that was also dealing with the effects of that.
Maybe you don't have to go any farther than just saying enhancing community? Because you can describe that, it'll be...
I think two of the, I've been around a long time, two of the most, I think, are important documents, just for the reason, years ago, it was the vision of Shakopee Comp Plan, because it was done a certain way.
Yeah.
It was done with enormous public input.
Right.
Um, we heard from them, the master, uh, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and they kind of tie into each other, and, you know, then what is the implementation of that? And trying to, and trying to do that, but we've heard from the community, how do you turn that around? Is that, you know, enhancing the community via redevelopment or development, or the big ideas that are in the comp plan?
Okay. So, enhancing community, that sounds like, that, that sounds like it captures your notion of development, redevelopment, but it's, it, it grabs that, let's deliver on the plans that we've done, make sure we follow through, and at the same time, now Bill threw in this notion, it also seems to capture a little bit of this, too. Does that, does that sound about right?
Well, the, my, this is just me, I think that we need to decide if we're gonna embrace that entertainment, culture, recreation identity, or we're not. Here again, Michael, something you said, you either have to go all the way with that or not, right?
Yeah.
Like, we have to totally embrace it to get it, you know, so that...
If we're on a shelf.
Right, to continue to sell it.
To make a point, so Canterbury is trying to take the race track and build 400 acres of a community, where you go there and they offer multiple experiences. So, we've already kind of dipped that off. Work that, or Canterbury Park will fail.
Sure. And, and if you play that out, let me just, let me just play that out for you. So, to me, if that does in fact fit under this enhancing community, one of the outcomes that you would want, it seems to me, in this next performance period, is to be able to answer that question. You have a resolution or a path forward on the whole entertainment, culture, and recreation question. You know, you have, you have figured it out, and you've got a solid path moving forward, because you've put things into place and you've reconciled all of that. It's a big deal, I mean, it sounds like to me, anyway.
Where does the company want to try university involvement?
Enhancing community identity.
Well, so, if, if, if in fact this is about implementing the big ideas, I mean, you've got some plans, right? You've got some things that, at least, if I'm, if I'm interpreting your question correctly, imply that you'll be doing some business development around that stuff. Yes? No? Yeah, okay. So, I would say then it would fit in there.
But again, on the other, seven.
Yeah, so...
You know, if we consolidate it...
So, what are we gonna consolidate?
Right, then we could shrink the list and then work on what's not on there. Again.
So, we could maybe take this off right now? Or is that gonna be a standard?
I understand you have some point under enhancing community.
What I'm saying is it go, does it go here, is what I'm saying.
My idea is on communication, that collaboration could be part of the communication, right? How we communicate, communicate, and how do we collaborate could be, because both those are communication-type points.
They're both stakeholder engagement, one's managing stakeholders.
Whether it's a, to an agency, or to the public, or...
Or staff.
Sounds reasonable. Is that, the group, I'm seeing heads nodding here? Yes? Okay.
When you think about a balanced scorecard, both of those are components, so the satisfaction component of
Okay.
collaboration, whether it's a partnership or...
And then, if you start thinking about bullet points that are, you know, fiscal stability and communication, I mean, enhancing the community, I can probably generate eight bullet points, because it would include stuff like infrastructure and things that are on that list.
And it, as, as far as diversity as a priority, I'm not sure how you want to do that, but I think it would fit under the communication.
Fits under many things.
It fits under, uh, enhancing the community, and it fits under...
It's under staff, yeah.
Staff development, yep, in all of, yep.
So, that, that can be, maybe with, with your agreement, it, that if we took that off as a priority, but with the understanding that
That it goes in different...
that when the groups break out, they'll be looking at that as a potential for one of the outcomes. Okay.
I read through that. I read through the, the envision Shakopee, the first line on there was that it was a strategic plan.
Yep.
So it was bigger than just a comp plan. So I think when I think about priorities, it has to be overarching, everything that's in the envision. So it's, for me, it's a community, changing the culture of the community.
Yeah, enhancing the community?
Yep, yep, and, and creating identity.
I would, I would actually, with respect, go the other way with that. I would take the envision Shakopee comp plan as an aspirational vision for the next 25 years. And that this is actually the first step set of, first step on the roadmap to getting you there. So it's, it's sort of like saying, what are the really important strategies in this first component to get us in that direction that we know we're gonna have to focus on? And so it, that's the only thing I would alter. I think they have to be large categories, as you suggest.
I think we're saying the same thing. I think these are things that are outside, that tell who our, our identity is and how we're actually gonna accomplish what's in there.
Right. And, and as you think about what a priority is, it's a way of, and I hate to use this term, but I can't think of another one, it's a heading, it's a, it's an umbrella for a set of the most important activities that you're going to do. And again, using that balanced scorecard framework, you've got fiscal. So if I, if I think about infrastructure, public safety, those are, now, they could stand alone. They could also be part of your operational effectiveness as well, or your core operations, or something like that. I don't know. I throw that out there to ask you how you want to go forward as you think about stating what your priorities are.
It's funny how these lists are as brainstorming, then you consolidate it. Now we're trying to take each of those and then have bullet points underneath.
Well, and I, and I, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't go too far in bullet pointing other than thinking about, do they have a logical nexus? You know, you want to, you still want to make sure that they connect and that they're... You don't want to predetermine, you know, if, if you've said, we're gonna create a new category, but automatically put three things under it because these are the three outcomes I want to achieve, I'm uncomfortable with that, so...
The infrastructure and public safety, although very important to our community, wouldn't that be, since we've done well already, just continue our services that we provide?
Yeah.
Or we'd state that, I think, without watering it down because public safety and infrastructure.
And that goes to my, my original question where I said, or my comment where I said that if you have something, like a delivery of public safety services or critical infrastructure, you're gonna continue to do that. For example, if you had lots of problems in public safety where you were concerned about having enough officers, or, or you were concerned about the condition of their rolling stock, or their equipment, or their facilities, and you had all, all these issues going on, or the neighborhoods were up in arms, you know, and then you end up with a list of six things that you need to address in the next three years. Maybe now that's a huge priority and we have all of these outcomes that we need to achieve now. But I don't hear you saying that. And that didn't, that didn't come up here on that list.
So continued quality services?
Yeah, so, so if you were going to, if you were going to say one of your outcomes was operation... Remember when we did the value proposition, we said operational excellence? Maybe something like operational effectiveness or operational excellence is one of your priorities. And you have things that you want to do either in the infrastructure area, the public safety area? I don't know. I, I don't want to, I don't want to feed this to you and force you to go that direction unless you tell me that that's important.
That also goes along with fiscal stability. I mean, we're an incredibly fiscal, stable organization.
Yep.
Exceptionally so.
Yep.
To the point, we're in better shape than we were during the recession. But even during the recession...
Right.
The reality was, it really didn't affect the organization for multiple reasons. So we're, we're gonna continue to be fiscal stable, whether or not, you know, it's on a list of priorities. It's built in our DNA.
Yeah.
So, you know, putting there, we're fiscal stable, it's a great political buzzword. Oh, we're fiscally stable, okay. Now, we may want to communicate about that better.
Yeah.
But we are fiscally stable.
Okay.
Efficient and effective service delivery is part of it.
Well, here's, here's where we are, as far as I can tell. Fiscal stability is still an important priority for you, right? You're gonna have, you're gonna need to focus on that irrespective of how well you're doing it and how well you're set up. That be true? Okay, let me go through this. Staff development came up over and over, workforce development, however you want to phrase that. Is that still something that rises to that level?
It is, but then again, it's something that we continue to invest in.
Right.
Okay, so maybe it's not, maybe there aren't three major outcomes that need to happen under that?
No, it's only the, on the threat or the, you know, came out that the staffing stability, I don't believe we have that. I believe we have top line staff. And staff development, one of the things that I think we can do rather than add as a severe threat is invest in staff via the development.
I think there's more to it than just development. I think it's...
Different umbrella.
It's providing staff and, and providing benefits and pay that's...
So maybe the priority is workforce? I, I don't want to use the word stability because we already use it. But is it, is it around workforce enhancement, workforce development, workforce...
Investment?
Workforce investment, I don't know.
I see it as something we...
Workforce capacity?
Like infrastructure and public safety.
Yeah.
We, we, we do more than any other organization I've ever been associated with. This organization right now, when it comes to staff development.
Okay.
Everything from training with the police department, some of the things we have in the contract with them, to, to the, what we offer to the general employees when it comes to our benefits for education and other options. So there's, there's a lot on the table that we currently do. We're constantly looking. Matter of fact, we just had, based upon our internal survey, we made some changes on some of the things that we offer. And we'll continue to do that. But this is, once again, fiscally stable in the DNA.
Yeah.
And you have years and years of where the staff have continued to be supported in both equipment. Our public works department has the finest equipment, I think I've, I've ever seen. You know, we don't, we don't have old stuff where we're trying to keep it going.
Add base, nailing line.
Other than a, a lake pump every now and then. But besides that, you know, so we, we really, when it comes to staff development and the internal pieces are doing really, really well.
I see it as quality public services. And then public safety, infrastructure, and staff development are underneath.
So, so rather than staff development, you were just saying it's, it's really about effective public services as the priority? And that then gets you the staff development piece, the public safety piece, the infrastructure piece potentially wrapped in that. And then with that, okay, and then I skipped over communication. I think that was definitely one. So let's, let's recap, this is getting messy here. Fiscal stability, communication, effective public services, and enhancing the community. Or enhancing community.
I thought it was identity.
I thought enhancing community is, that's what we're talking about, right? Deliver from, let's enhance it.
Enhancing the strength of the community. We all talked here, we all, we know that we have a great foundation already, right? It's strengthening that.
Comment on the, the infrastructure and redevelopment part.
Yep.
Big things we have going in the city.
Right.
Canterbury TIF, huge deliverable in the next three and a half years.
Yep.
So Canterbury TIF.
Okay.
The expansion to the west. We gotta build lift stations and infrastructure, but the annexation part of it, it's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
So there's those things that are, that are working together that I feel just get lost a little bit in enhancing the community, that label of it.
But those are gonna happen, Steve. You know, the, the reality is, is that those are going to happen. And the key is, is trying to focus on something higher than our day-to-day activities. And, and I think it, just me, enhancing the community or enhancing the strength of the community, that's exactly where that would fit in. And, you know, we have an obligation to do those projects regardless.
So the way that this works, so if I've got, let me just, let me just make sure I'm counting because like this is pretty messy. I got two, I got three, I got four. So my, my rule, the only thing I rule with an iron fist is, besides that, is, is that minimum of four, maximum of six priorities. Because you get beyond six, you can't manage this stuff. And, and so my question then becomes one of, I know what that is, I think I know what that is, I'm pretty sure I know what that is. And I think this one is a, is still feels, I, I kind of know what it is, but it still feels catch-all to me. And, and I think that's where Steve was coming from. We might have a lot of, we might have a lot of stuff in here that might potentially demand one more category. I'm just asking, that's what I'm asking.
I think if you look at that enhancing, strength in the community, you are gonna have a lot of stuff under, but I think we just have...
Well, so what...
Maybe another category comes out of it.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that this is the opposite, this process is the opposite of saying, we have 100 things to do and we're just gonna prioritize the top 20 and get them done. No. This is about saying strategically, what are the most important things that we need to address because they're challenging us right now? And, and within each of these three, or four to six categories, in this limited amount of time we have, the next three years, what are the top three things that we're gonna do?
So I think Steve's concern and our concern is that all those things you mentioned, if the ministry says they'll get done, we need to make sure that...
Yep.
Listed so that everyone's aware they have to get done.
But, but we're not talking about projects.
No, I'm talking about infrastructure that oughta happen in order to make all the other things happen.
So what I would say, so let me just, let me just clarify though, for my purposes alone. Enhancing the strengths of the community, is that making sure that the major schemes and plans and dreams that you have have some focus and get done?
But I also feel like that's what we come to work every day. I mean, that just, the kind of, you talk about catch-all, like that's what we all do every day when we come to work, right? Enhancing and...
Well, but I think effective public service, if I, if I was thinking about what you do every day, that would be that as well, and maybe more so.
It is, but I, I feel both, right? I mean, I feel that that's kind of why we come to work every day, right?
Because I was here, here's what I was hearing with this. I, I, I was hearing that we have a lot of plans, we have a lot of development, redevelopment, stuff that's going on. And it's big stuff. And you got some plans for it. And there's some uncertainty about our, our ability to follow through on stuff. And we need to honor our own sense of us not either being able to do it or committing to it. So this process will help us to commit to some of those big things. And is this where they're gonna, is this where that falls?
Call it big ideas or something, that kind of leaves a few of those things out.
Because I'm willing to throw development, or redevelopment, or something else here too, if in fact, that's the one additional thing. Or infrastructure, or, you know, one more category.
So we talk about infrastructure a lot. You know, we're not Duluth that has to invest $12 million a year for the next 20 years to fix the stuff they haven't invested in 50 years. Not in St. Paul where the roads are graded out at 40 that they have to spend $15 million for the next 20 years just on that. We have $146 million for the infrastructure. And I do, I think we do a lot of great maintenance work to keep ahead of curve. I don't think it's falling apart. We have fixed some aging things, but I think, I, I think a solid maintenance program. And then you talk about the new construction that comes with development, right? If the economy tips over, someone's development might stop, therefore it might not need a road or a roundabout. I think we do a good job in that area.
Okay.
We don't have the troubles of a 150-year-old community that hasn't, hasn't done what we are.
But, but I think a lot of the newer infrastructure, the lead time, it's not like we can just go tomorrow. Well, that's ready to go, let's go do it. I mean, it takes a year or two to plan things out. So recession or no recession, the city keeps planning that stuff out. We know sometimes the current may be ready to go.
That's under the, the services, the quality services, effective public services.
All right, so I am, I am going to accept your judgment that these are the four major priorities. And I want to describe to you what we're gonna do with that and how the process works, okay? So look at the screen. We're gonna come up with a quick definition, at least some bullet points about what each of those means so that we're crystal clear. And for, and, and then we'll all end up working those bullet points into a more specific couple of sentences or a paragraph. These are examples of what I mean by that, all right? But what you're, what you're going to do is you identify the priorities, which you did. And then for each of those priorities, you have to define the three most important outcomes that you want to achieve in the next three years. You need to identify the things that you will count, track, monitor, report. Those are the key outcome indicators. These are the indicators that tell you that you're moving forward towards that outcome. And then finally, you need to have a measurable end state. What does it look like in, in quantifiable terms? What's a reasonable but stretched target that you would set out there for that outcome? Has to have a direct relationship to that outcome, your target. Here's what it looks like in practice. So let's, and, and this is from a community. The community said, we want fiscal or financial sustainability. Boy, a big surprise there, everybody wants that. But what does it mean to that community? What will it mean to you? The three things that they wanted were an adequate fund balance, they didn't have it. They wanted, in this particular case, operating cost reduction. They were under some fiscal stress. And they wanted less reliance on tax revenues in their general fund. Again, probably a big shock to anybody in this room or working in Minnesota, right? So those are the three outcomes that they identified. Now, this isn't rocket science, it's pretty much straightforward. So then, in this particular case, what would they be tracking, counting? They'd be looking obviously at their year-end fund balance. They'd be looking at annual operating costs. They'd be looking at revenues. Again, not rocket science, direct relationships. The third thing is, well, what would a target be? In their particular case, they already had a fund balance policy in place, they just weren't delivering on it. So their target was meet the fund balance policy target of 35% by January of 2020. So they still had work to do and they were gonna have to mobilize a lot of effort to get there, but that was their target. Operating cost reduction, what were they gonna do? 2% reduction... Two percent reduction between twenty, fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019. Pretty simple, straightforward. And then less reliance on tax revenues, between fiscal eighteen and fiscal twenty, they wanted a ten percent increase in non-tax revenue. So they were gonna go find additional non-tax revenues in that two-year period of time. Now, in this particular case, financial sustainability, that's the most quantifiable of any of the, of the priorities that you're likely to find. So that's a pretty straightforward kinda thing. Probably the second most, and it, it isn't one that you have, but economic development, I'll give you one more example of how that works. In this particular case, this community wanted a vibrant downtown, that was the outcome they wanted. They wanted a growing tax base, again, not surprising. And thirdly, they wanted quality job growth. So when they looked at those three outcomes, they said, "Well, what are we gonna monitor? We're gonna monitor downtown retail vacancies, that's a good indicator of vibrancy for our downtown. We wanna have a net market value for new invest, we're gonna track net market value for new investment, uh, as a way of saying, we have a growing tax base." And then finally, we're gonna monitor for job growth, new jobs paying above the city median wage, because they said quality for them meant had to be above the median. So again, all of these things relate to each other. So then vibrant downtown, retail vacancies, what would be a target? Fifteen percent decrease in vacancies by January 2020. Growing tax base, twenty million dollar increase from January 2018 to twelve twenty twenty in net new market value. And then quality job growth, two hundred new jobs by the end of 2020.
Funny, your, your two examples, um, we already do eighty percent of them.
Yeah.
We do it all.
Yeah.
You know, I like how it works out that you're trying to have a measurable call, that's measurable-
Right.
-and a target, but your fund balance, we already do that.
Right. My point is, I gave you very simple, straightforward stuff, so you understand the thought process, because now, when it starts to be about communication, about enhancing, some of these kinda things are a little more amorphous, and you're gonna be challenged to come down and say, "What's the quantifiable outcome that I want in this particular realm?" So, yes, in those cases, you're doing it. Most communities, when they, when they look at these examples, it's like, yeah, that's, that's what we do, but you still gotta have some kind of a measurable to know if you're either on target or you're continuing to sustain yourself. So what it looks like, and, and where, where we go with this, is, uh, when you have this all on one page, it's your, uh, priorities on the left-hand column, I showed you this before, your desired outcomes, your key indicators, and your targets. That's what we're working on tonight, right? And then I'll come back in a couple weeks and work with the staff and put the projects and initiatives together with them. So that's how it works. So, let's go back. We're gonna take, uh, five minutes, and we're going to, you're gonna give me... Give me some bullet points that define what fiscal stability is. What, what would be within the definition for you here in Shakopee on fiscal stability? What does this mean?
You have this under economic development, but I, you know, a, a growth in your taxes.
Yeah. Growing tax base, right?
Growing tax base.
Okay.
Stable or lowered tax rate?
Stable or lowering tax, lower tax rate, alright? Yeah?
Funded long-term plan.
Funded long-term plans. Adequate fund balance, yep.
We do that, we know that's what I, we already do that.
Yep. But I mean, if, if you were saying stable, that has, is that a, is that a part of it? What else?
Expanding, you know, you brought it up on that thing, and expanding revenue is outside of the law.
Yeah.
And we've done a pretty good job of that in the last year or four years.
Growing non-tax revenue, yep. Okay, good.
Is there a stretch goal on that, or?
No, this is just, what this is for, is this helps to define what you mean by fiscally stable, alright? Because there's gonna, we're gonna break you into four groups to work on these. Communication. What's the definition here? Give me some bullet points. There is, there's internal communication, right? That was part of it, as I recall.
Collaboration.
Partners.
Internal, this is collaboration with partners.
External.
External...
Engagement.
Community engagement.
Transparency.
Transparency. Diversity equity.
Branding.
What?
Branding.
Branding.
Like a meat in Shakopee.
Yeah. Okay. Effective... Public... Services. Okay?
Management of infrastructure.
This was, uh, staff too? This is where staff came in?
Adequate staffing.
Huh? Staff development.
Said adequate staffing.
Adequate staffing, yeah.
Public safety leadership.
I was gonna say policies and procedures.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the under-process improvement.
Process improvement.
OJ's deliverables in there?
Say that again?
Deliverables.
Yeah. Okay.
Backwards to say like, does this mean?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd, I'd like to ask a question here, effective public services-
Public services.
You know, the protection of the data or IP, I think is a... We're all, and I don't know about the follow-up there, but...
Just made Andy's night. Good job, Andy.
But it, it comes to more-
It's a real, you know, you need to pay rent or whatever, tell me that, you know, I think we should do what we can to protect, and I know that we, you know, it's a tough thing in the business world too, to be so far ahead of it that you got it, but, um...
We wanna be putting on the class at scale to teach everybody else how to do it right.
Is customer service fall in here?
Yeah.
Is that effective?
It does, yeah. Enhancing strengths of the community.
Riverfront.
Canterbury.
Canterbury.
I would make it broader than just Canterbury mayor, and just say support for our, our entertainment venues.
Entertainment, venue, support, right.
Culture.
We wanna put big ideas on there?
Big ideas.
Big ideas. Plan, and plan implementation, plan delivery, or whatever, right?
Not just the center, also-
General election.
Making sure that we're looking at the protection of the environment when we're making plans.
Downtown and history.
Like natural resources?
Yeah, natural resources.
Say again?
Downtown and history.
Okay.
Can I throw in diversity and equity in that one too?
Right. What was that?
Parks planning?
Parks planning. Okay.
Jobs.
Highways drawn.
That warehouse.
Should that be more on the fiscal stability?
Actually, so let me, let me say that, before we get too far on that. So, because for those who are gonna work on fiscal stability, there's that whole yin and yang about fiscal stability comes from having a strong tax base, which, you know, you get from having good economic development and all that. Actually, the way I'm interpreting it, and I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page, in case you differ from what I was saying. When I think of fiscal stability, I'm thinking more of the management of your finances and, and the care and feeding of, of all of that. Part of which is that you're making sure that you're, you've got a strong tax base, but it's more about, are we planning, are we implementing, are we taking care of all of that? And the other side of it is the more proactive and, and the active part about growing your tax base and, and dealing with that. That's, that's not what, I mean, that's the, um, this is the management of it, that's the development and the outcome side of, of making sure that it's okay.
So that's the development and the outcome side?
Yeah, this would be the development part of it. So I would say, and I, when you started on Riverfront and Canterbury, we didn't really go any farther than that, but I would, are you okay putting development and redevelopment here?
About social capital? Where I'm going with that is, we've got partnerships, like with the school district and the academies-
Okay.
-that are enhancing the strengths of the community. It's leveraging diversity.
And I would, I would say yes, in the way that you're talking about it, but in communication, that was going to be the area where we were talking about collaboration with partners. So I think that's maybe more in that area, if I'm remembering that correctly, yes?
Back to the point about the fiscal stability.
Yeah.
I, I guess I interpret it more as both, both the internal management and also growing the tax base stuff. Cause I think that we need to change the narrative on the development and redevelopment stuff that we're doing, and we were talking this morning about a project, and the idea of bringing, you know, sixty or seventy thousand dollar, your annual base jobs into the community is a good idea, because you follow that to its next logical conclusion.
Okay.
We are potentially going to, if we do that consistently, raise our median income in the community, which will then bring us that triple A bond rating, just as, so to me, kind of knowing some of the history, I kinda like the narrative of having the jobs, the, the tax base stuff under fiscal stability, cause we can, we proved it with this, this year's tax rating, this bond rating, we can manage like crazy, and it doesn't mean that we're gonna get that triple A.
And, and to piggyback on what Nate was saying, um, I forget what my point was.
Yeah, no, I, I, so let me, let me, let me, let me agree with you, if you are narrowly focused on that, and here's, here's why I would say that.
Oh, I know what I was gonna say.
Okay, but, well, so where I was gonna go with that is, I think it's fine to say that part of our fiscal stability or sustainability practices are to, are to take a hard look at, what are we doing to, um, expand the tax base and way, uh, improve the quality of jobs, and do all the things that will bring money into our coffers, right? While you are doing all of those things, they usually fall under this very large umbrella of improving the quality of life, addressing neighborhood stability, improving the riverfront, a bu- bunch of things that have to do with, um, community development that has less to do with, you know, the, some would say, the side benefit is, we get financial stability. Others would say, we get financial stability, and the side benefit is, we get, you know, there's an endless debate about that. But, so I, I, so what you, where your focus is, depends on how you wanna do that. So I would argue that at least part of the development, redevelopment, is about the community development aspect of that, and the jobs and tax base, part of that, to the extent that you're hard-wired to go to the bottom line, is about putting it in there.
And, and now, to go back to what Nate was saying, I totally agree with him, especially when it comes to growth.
Uh-huh.
Because if we start shrinking as an organization, wanna know why St. Paul has, has crappy roads? You wanna know why the infrastructure in city is deteriorating? You wanna know why they're not keeping up with the pay? Because at some point, they stopped growing, they didn't manage their growth, and they're left with big bills at the end of the day, and then they've got no way to pay for them, except for stopping that investment. So fiscal, fiscal stability is, does wrap around growth, that's one of the big reasons why we've been able to do a lot of the stuff we do today.
So, you said you did work in Wilmington?
Yeah.
So how do they look at, from a fiscal standpoint, reserve incentives, the Mall of America and everything?
Yeah, I mean, that, they're, one of their big debates during their strategic planning process, and, and the thing that overhangs them, just as an organization, it doesn't paralyze them, but they're very aware that some shift, or some major external influence, either in people's tastes, or whatever, that creates the Mall of America going, you know, dramatically down in size, or, or attractiveness, makes a gigantic difference to them.
But to their benefit, whenever that-
Yes.
...years ago, you know, they established, you know, so they have-
Right. They got fiscal disparities, contributions, they got all sorts of-
A billion dollars in their mortgage today, because they need a strategic decision to be prepared.
Right.
And I think one of the things that we talked about this morning is, so you give up seven or eight years of tax revenue today, well, that all a hundred percent comes online, and you've gotten the benefit of all that new development and all the new jobs.
And I think exactly what you're talking about, I mean, they, their, if you think about their history, and I can remember back to when they started the planning for the mall, and I was at the Met Council, when they got the fiscal disparities distribution and all of the other weird changes that happened. The, the reality is, that they've gone through cycles of, you know, build and change and all that. You're at the same point. I mean, you'll make lots of choices now about the value of, of strategically investing in certain directions and growth, and-
Saying no to-
And saying yes to some things and saying no to other things, right. You'll have to make those strategic trade-offs in different cycles of your strategic planning process. So the next three to five years, when you've made this round of things, then you'll look at that, oh, okay, you know, where are we now? And, and what part of the cycle are we in? So yeah, I think, I, the, the long answer to the, to the observation you made is, it can and should be there, and I think it can and should be here too.
Okay, you just said that we're gonna have to make choices about, you know, priorities each cycle.
Yep.
Looking up at this list now, there is a lot of strengths in our community on this current thing.
Right.
On this current list. So, is our next step then just to pick outcomes based on those, or is this just gonna be the definition?
So let me, let me just tell you what this is, before we get too crazy with this. Th- these are not projects, these are just, um, to help you define what we mean, what, what the universe of, of what enhancing the strengths of the community is. So, uh, when the group goes away, what I'm gonna ask, what did I do with my remote? Here it is. So when the group goes away, we're gonna, I'm gonna have, have a break here in a minute, and then we're gonna assign you to groups. Each group is gonna sit down with their definitions, and you're gonna come up with three outcomes, three indicators, three targets, uh, within your area- with three outcomes, three indicators, three targets within your area. And all you're doing is taking this as sort of foundational information, just to help you to focus on what are those three outcomes, okay? Does that make sense? Okay. Let's take a, a quick break, and then I, I need Nate and Bill. And then when you come back, we're going to break into four groups.
Shannon, ready?
Yes.
You can sit.
Oh, by the way, before everybody leaves, I'm...
Right here, that is your guidance for what's included with that. And the team is Angelica, Nate, Kristen, and Lori. Over here is the effective public services. Jay, Steve, Rick, Alyssa. Over here is enhancing strengths of the community. Mayor is here, so I put that near you. Tobin, Kurski, Jeff, right here. Fiscal stability, Jody, Bill, and Andy. So you're going to be over here. Now, what I'm going to do to try to give you as much of a fighting chance as possible on these things is to throw up on the screen. I can rotate back and forth, I can go back and forth. But what you're going to each get, and what I want you to do, is think about the three most important outcomes that need to happen in the next three years in your area. I will be, I'll be giving each of you a flip chart that looks like this, and I'll give you a marker. I don't want you to touch it until you're absolutely sure you know what you're going to write on it. So there'll be lots of note-taking and arguing back and forth. I'm going to circulate, Heather can circulate. We'll listen and try to help you get your heads around that. I don't want you to go too quickly to the indicators and targets. Really, your job is figure out the right outcomes. Once you've figured out the right outcomes, then think about the target that needs to happen associated with that. Up on the screen are some examples from another community. I can give you, you know, they may or may not make any sense or help you at all, but you can look at them, and I'll, like I said, I'll cycle back and forth to them just to let you know what others have done, okay? Go to it, and then once you have, once you're ready to go, and once you're ready to transfer it to the flip chart, each group is going to come up and present to the others. Everybody has to own this, right? We're dispersing the workload, but at the end of the day, you all just sign off on the final version, all right? Start up.
...
When it says long-term plans.
I think, you know, from our perspective, we're looking. Public season. After, after discussing and. I, so you know, we have an plan. We can't. Not actually produce something. That we have to fund. But he is, uh, he is as by doing it and doing it right.
Okay. Question for the group.
Yeah, I would. I didn't really think of that. The idea is. Uh, yeah, I mean, clearly, that's a good one. Second one, uh, revenue sources. Well, we would know how much revenue we take in. Offside of levy right now. Yep, so we would know that number where we are and then figure out the percentage. And new revenues or expand the revenue.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, we have those numbers. It's just that we need to go back and look at them, pull them out, and then see what's viable.
Yeah, that, the, and, and that's a good point. The placeholders that they're using and that I think maybe others might be using, at least for today, is prudent. So that you can go back and say, okay, what makes the most sense. But we will.
That was our minutes mark.
Right.
And I agree with you on this.
Now, I'll tell you all, on this particular one, we. So again, we, we actually were having our strategic initiatives initially and Craig walked us back over there. So we've got a list already of the revenue.
Yeah.
Of things that we're looking forward to taking a hard look at, so.
All right, let's give them a hand. That was good. All right, uh, next group. Enhancing. Community strengths.
Action.
So in, in enhancing community strengths, as we explored this, there's, there's a lot of things that came on that sheet in trying to consolidate some of these ideas. Into something that was tangible in terms of outcomes. So this phrase, get those big ideas a reality. So actually delivering them, the big ideas. And the K O I on this would be the funded and executed projects. So what we're actually delivering on in terms of these big ideas. Uh, here, we put four of the big ideas as key targets. Uh, cultural trail, the innovation center, access to the river, and the gateways for West End starts.
So, so, uh, is, is this the operative word? And all of these would be?
All execute.
Oh, okay. So, you know, so this would be my X, you know.
Our next outcome would be enhanced quality of employment and jobs. The K O I on that would be increasing the average wage base and median income. Target would be the average median income would increase by a percentage. We put a percentage up there. And then also see a new average hourly wage. The last outcome.
So let me, let me just pause there for a second. So I, I just, I, you'll notice I crossed that out. Actually, what you're monitoring is the average wage. Trying to do then is average median income would increase by ten percent. By such and such a date? Is that, you're thinking we can influence? Okay. So I'll also put just a line there. Ten percent sounds good. New average hourly wage. Okay.
So new is the output.
And is that, we'll, we'll hit that again by some target there.
Are those, are those jobs that, um, that will give economic assistance to, or is that just jobs, period?
I think jobs that were somehow. And so the, we, what we want to do is increase our average median income. And we have a target of ten percent of that. How are you gonna do that? You're gonna do that from a roundup. And you're not gonna take any more fifty dollar investment. How you're, you wanna raise the basis, increase them over time.
And then our last outcome is to successfully leverage the entertainment destinations. So taking what we have and leveraging that, the K O I on that would be an increase in what we call holding power. Longer. And the targets for that would be an increase in the number of overnight stays and the A D R, which is the average day rate. Or, uh, a significant lessening of the financial burden. So we're talking specifically about public safety. Uh, we would take less responsibility and some of these entertainment destinations would take. Uh, how we do that would be the strategic mission.
So, um, it's always gonna be of something that would be dollars or a percent by. So, so here, let's, so this would be. Reduction of the financial burden. Another way of saying that, I, so you could probably say that both ways, right? You could say we're reducing our financial burden. Increasing the amount of contribution. Simpler just to say your financial share is, is gonna go down, probably.
Well, I mean, less of the financial burden.
Yeah. Doesn't matter how you get to it, right? So it gives you more options. Right. Okay.
Pretty measured in numbers.
Okay. Questions about that?
Well, I just have a comment. I'll, I'll say that how closely aligned both ours and theirs were, and even our strategic initiatives, which kind of. Close connections there.
And I think, and, and inevitably that happens. So what I think we'll do for right now, we'll hold this. But when we take the next step to, and I need staff to talk about initiatives and all that, we'll kind of go back and forth and, and decide about either alignment, realignment, re, reverting. But I think that. If I had to argue something, I mean, this, this for sure was a huge issue for you. So it's something that has to sustain itself throughout all of this.
And that came up in our revenue diversification.
Other questions? Then again. Effective public service.
I can't.
You got it?
Yes.
All right.
No pressure, Steve. We just had two outstanding presentations, so.
Yeah. No pressure. I'm just standing by with a red pen.
Big actors.
All right. So effective public service, uh, we wanted to focus on ensuring we have a stable workforce as well. Um, and part of that is really good made for.
Here, here.
If at all. So it's important to have that. And then, uh, some of our improvement monitors. Uh, internal hiring rate, just some ideas that anybody would.
And go back and say, actually. A- actually, the K O I's here would be turnover rate, internal hiring rate. If that's what you would monitor for this. So then I would say. That, that you would want, but using that, you'd want, uh, uh, and remind me, you would say that you. Go to stable workforce, it would be the turnover rate. Some percent or lower year over year, right? And then you, you would be some percent of, um, employees.
Internal hires.
Would be internal hires. Uh, for supervisor open.
Performance management not be a strategic initiative, though?
That would be a strategic initiative. That's why I crossed it off there. So, so what you're saying is, you, the outcome you want is a stable workforce. Indicators of that would be your turnover rate, your internal hiring rate. The targets are, you want a turnover rate of at or below such and such year over year. And you'd want a certain X percent of, of your, um, employees, hiring, current employees hired for your supervisor management open. So you'd want. Those are the targets. And that starts to go after things like succession planning, training, all the things that, you know, performance management system, uh, that you have over there.
Wait till she next one.
Need a new marker?
Yeah.
So effective public services in the context of. We have things ready when land developers. What are we responsible for as far as, uh, intersection improvements? So we have long-term planning, like the A U A R, and then we have our C I P. So it's progress on the infrastructure planning in the context of what's next? We have twenty-plus years of planning, but what's next? What's in the next three years? So the out, the outcome is progress on it. The K O I would be priority of the projects is identified. And target would be agreed upon.
Well, there. So, so maybe what you really want is you want effective. Infrastructure planning, right? That's what you want. And, and one way of knowing that is, is by tracking, uh, priority projects, right? Prioritized and, um, the plans in place. And so I guess, um. Saying, when we were talking about this, is ideally, you'd wanna have everybody in this room or the council. Having an, an approval of a prioritization of those projects. Because there's so many out there, but what is it that we need to be focused on? Effective planning and process. Does that make sense? So the, the question then becomes one of, is it adequate? Is it, is it enough to say if we want, if we have effective infrastructure planning? Say by. Such and such date, we will have, we will have put it in place, uh, a prioritized infrastructure plan.
I think a three-year window. We'd have, by a certain date, we'd have. Depending that that might change.
I thought Michael said help with the A U A R. Like Trident, an example is Trident Development comes here. Well, why don't you do a week of ground votes? Already done it? Does Trident turn, does Trident trigger that, or does it? Trigger that? We can. No, I think it goes back. Okay, next one?
Well, wait, let's, let's stay there. So let's, let's go back to your point. You were saying.
I would think a three-year window. You'd wanna have three years' worth of projects. Next year, you do that next year. Every year, you'd have that, three years in the pocket.
So, so right now, we have a C I P. And we have a lot of placeholders and. Dogging around quite a bit more in reactive ones. So it's B and one pro act, making sure we have the projects. So it is based off the level of fall. So you're not gonna put the rumble ball in and then hope someone. But, and although we have development and. Follow and. Where, if you do that on kind of a one year. Take it out.
Now, the issue is, is plenty's here.
Actually, I have revenue to the roundabouts now because we don't. Do you wait?
Curious. I mean, you're in the classic dilemma that everybody else, but. Right. But, but it, it sounds to me like one of the preliminary. Rest link that is, what is our, what is our strategic approach to development and infrastructure? From a, from the standpoint of, you know, what leads? Do, do we, do we attempt to, um, seed the development by doing certain kinds of things? Do we wait for the development and pay it in, in this way? I mean, there are different funding approaches. There are different financial beliefs about, uh, development paying for itself. Or city, you know, fronting some of these costs. Is it, is what you need to do here a simple prioritization of infrastructure? Or is it more about having a, an infrastructure, uh, funding and prioritization strategy? And, you know, is it, or is it a more encompassing?
I think. All tools and toolbox. Some areas. Have a tiny and have one pay their friction. Not a A developer, have them to pay everything on that intersection, intersection on the region. Talked about it this morning, one of the issues. Everyone says growth needs pay for itself, but there's a lot of stuff that gets done and benefits everyone.
Actually, infrastructure is just the plan.
No, it's actually. In the A U A R, you'll see it at some point in the good stuff. That's only a five-year plan by state statute. There's a lot of stuff in there. Plus or less because. With their, it, it, there's some huge impacts. Water system. Like it or not, it's going to come. And so council's gonna be reaching a point. We're not gonna make that happen. And the development community is gonna go.
I'm, I'm gonna add some wording, not because. Um, I believe that I'm just trying to. I have quite a target of, by such and such date, you would have an adopted infrastructure, uh, infrastructure prioritized, a prioritized infrastructure plan and funding. I use the word philosophy as opposed to. I'm kind of thinking that that's where you're at. It's, it's about, what's our philosophy for doing this?
I think that's probably a good way for it.
That's what I was sounding like doing it. I just wanted to put that on paper. Okay, cool.
Next one? All right. The outcome would be, uh, ensuring we have adequate staffing to meet the city's growth. Rather than being reactive. Ten more miles of streets, we need to add a public works maintenance operator, something like that. Ten more miles of people, we need two more police officers. Probably wrong ratio, okay?
Ten more miles of people?
All right. So the K O I would be, uh, having a study in place and. Staffing ratios. And the target would be, uh, in X number of years determine the level of staffing needed. And we do it, you know, not in every department, but, uh, we did. Add in that, um, fashion. That's what we have.
I, I like, I like that one. I suggest having. Cars and. Fire station three.
Craig has just the word for you.
Resources.
That was the last thing I'm gathering all to meet the demands.
There we go.
What was that last word you wrote in? After growth? Growth demands, okay.
Uh, yeah, it should be the, yeah, it should be.
Well, we gave it a shot.
Fans.
Beautiful job.
Oh. More questions? All right, let's give them a hand. You have one more?
Yes, I do.
Did he really write a smiley right there? Did he already give himself a smiley?
Okay, ours, uh, was.
Where, where are we writing?
I'm not the writer. It was a brown pen, okay?
So for communication, uh, the first one was more voices in the. Kind of both from an internal and an external standpoint. Um, we're thinking. For folks, uh, you know, racially diverse, ethnically diverse, culturally diverse, age diverse, geographically diverse, um, voices. I hate to do, which is we're gonna actually create a measure. Find a way to figure out whether or not we're reaching people to engage with that. And then we'll do to kind of cross-check that and make sure it's representative. Increase both overall engagement and then. Our representative samples. Uh. That covers kind of the diversity element, uh, and the community in the game. Outcome here, what I'm calling right now transparency two point up. I'm keeping it as trademark. Set it on camera. And this kind of goes to the transparency point and, um. Most of the transparency. But here's the idea is that, you know, when transparency became a buzzword, it was, here's the window, feel free to. That was what transparency was. Now it's quite literally, we need to be ringing out the window and pointing at you specifically and saying, you wanna see this, come look at it. Our idea here is trying something entirely new, where we're going to try to engage people around transparency and start with why. So the idea is, instead of just saying, here's your information, we're going to proactively explain why we are making the decisions that we are. We think a great measure for this is the level of trust that's in the community survey. Uh, we did horribly, frankly, this last time around. But we think if we do a good job of explaining why, that that trust indicators.
why, that that trust indicator is going to go up, especially if we couple it with that, and we just feel a percentage increase on that particular indicator. So I, okay, I mean, I give the transparency two point oh piece. What is, what is a successful outcome? Like, you've increased. Or a level of trust, right? So is this, is the outcome about increase, trust in government? Or do we write that? I just made that right, transparency two point oh.
Take transparency to the next level.
Yeah, okay, I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to, I need, there needs to be a connection between the outcome and the target. If I say that what I'm targeting is an increase in level of trust, then my outcome should be something about trust, and, you know, trust and transparency, I don't know. I just, I just, it needs to say one versus the other, or change the target, I don't care. Trust works, I mean, that word we used, ownership, you know. That's essentially what we're trying to get to. We think that we need to do a better job, not just opening the window, we need to do a better job of reaching out. So this was, there's. Imagine the thing about it is, you act, we actually ask, what's, you know, your overall perception of the trustworthiness of the city should be? Oh, yeah. And then you also get, we had a question, you get county, state, federal, and we were thinking we could compare those other three. Every organization and every city is higher than the county, the state, and federal government, but we thought we could have some comparison. Okay. Trust means that we, confidence means, I believe we can, confidence. Had a bunch of ideas about, you know, initiatives around this look like, that I think define that a little bit, so. And then the last one was kind of a more positive city and community image. Again, it was a nice, there was a measure in the community survey, measured overall view of the city, the image of the city. So on that, we got that type of branding. The one that we left out a little bit was the collaboration of partners, so it was kind of.
On the first one, engage in the decision-making process. What does decision-making process?
I think we're trying to get this, we're not just putting information out to people to have, we are actively inviting them to engage back. So where the traditional model of communications is working, this sense, we're actually trying specific that, and then intentionally incorporate all the impact that we get from what into.
Give me, give me a decision.
We're talking bigger public policy decisions, so. What the, you know, the idea to, we're going to have this, have to choose which of the, let's engage, find out which ones are the highest priorities. Obviously, the final decision maker really is the council, but we need to actively seek out the input.
Talking about tactical decisions.
I think so. I think that's fair, I mean, that would be a reasonable.
My idea or my thought was, in this, in regard to this, is, let's just take, you know, have this sort of fund that we want to develop, and when that would be something that would be set up sometime to meet with different parts of our community that we generally don't see. You know, in our discussion, we talked about, we usually hear from the people that live from first avenue to ten commercial over. We don't hear from a huge population of our community and have engagement, where maybe there's some part ethnic group of our, you know, that did something different in there, if there are ideas, engage them in the, you know, planning process, that it invites everybody to be a part of, not just a small group or what are ideas.
Right.
Kind of engaging them and making them feel like they are just as vital and important to the rest of the city, you know, rest of the community. Anything else?
Let's just do. Building offices, that's a, we already have.
Right, yeah.
But the human mind.
I get it, interesting.
You know, and every community is trying to, always expand their engagement, and one of the things we've done through surveys, we have great engagement on the, I think our surveys, those percentage of active participants, those, it didn't grow, right? You know, instead of four or eight hundred, I would like to do fifty. How, in communication, how can we get the information out and open the window and speak it out there, get them engaged to give us some input? Every community tried. Better than others, I don't know why.
I thought that we were going to say that all this is a stretch. Everything has not been cracked by many communities. We have to fire a couple of willing to do it.
All right, who were the reactors? All learning that as municipalities or public organizations.
That's it, sir. Trust in the M R P. Here's where we are. First of all, good work, everyone. Very good work. You have, in fact, gone from identifying the priorities, you put the outcomes, indicators, and targets together, and did that in one night. I will be coming back, as I said, to work with the senior management team. We'll do, we'll make sure that the wording is right on all of this, and bump the edges up a little bit, perhaps, not changing. And we'll work on identifying initiatives. Initiatives are those projects, programs, things that actually go to the next level and make these targets a reality. So what that looks like is, you know, three, five per period, smart initiatives, specific areas, what, when, or how. And so the, you know, eventually, your staff will, for each of those initiatives, create a detailed action plan, walking through all of these kinds of things. So if I was to just sort of recast and step back and go back to where we were, the idea behind all of this is to give you, at the highest level, a one-page summary, as I said at the very beginning, that, you know, the mayor gets a call and says, come on down to the chamber and tell us what's going on, he pulls that down, and he's got everything at his fingertips. At an operating level, each of the departments, everybody responsible for that, they end up with, oops, off the line. They end up with the action plan that tells them what they're responsible for, and we have it integrated across the organization, so that you really do have a three-year work plan to make all of this real. If you think about the very first exercise we did, when everybody went around the table and said what their experiences. Kathy, you said, hey, you know, I don't like it when they sit on shelves. I had a bad experience because we did it and it sat on a shelf. I hope that by understanding that we're focused on tangible outcomes and dates and measurables and action plans, that you won't actually be able to hide from this one. Because somebody somewhere along the line is going to say, well, there's a date here, and I see the, on that date, there's progress on that. A lot of organizations and me and an earlier version of myself used to simply look at all the things we had to do, that hundred project list, and we prioritized the top twenty, and that was our work plan. Well, you know, the reality is, if you look at, when you're finished here, at that strategic initiative list, you've got a lot of projects. But they're not just the top hundred projects, and you prioritize the top twenty. These are done strategically in areas of most importance, and now they will be the projects that make sense, because they're folded in and oriented to the things that you want to have happen, that you're going to spend. That's why we do it this way. It's your plan. The end of the day, it's your plan, and I appreciate the fact.
Does anybody have any more questions to crack it off, or comments?
Thank you for the effort.
All right, thank you.
You are adjourned. Well, that's not my job.
The guy with the gavel is in charge.
So there, is there else, if you have any on that?
No, we'll see everybody tomorrow at our regular scheduled time and place, seven P M here at City Hall for City Council meeting.
Other business requirements, or?
No, sir.
We're adjourned to Tuesday, October first, at seven P M for our regular City Council meeting. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, we are adjourned at seven.